Public meeting and we'll start with the pledge and we'll get going.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody, thanks for coming. First up, I'll entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing for Gale Associates, reference to Gadda T Hangar project.
Still moved?
Second? Okay, made in seconded. Okay, all in favor? Alright, okay. Alright, Gale Associates, you're up, so either yourself or one of you.
So we've, we have the comment, the second set of review comments from Whitman and Bingham, and that's something that we'll work on addressing.
Which isn't everybody's packet, okay?
Yeah.
We'll work on addressing the majority of those over the next few weeks.
Okay.
If it's possible to get a conditional approval, obviously the airport would appreciate that, if not, we'll kind of work on getting everything buttoned up over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, myself, I think, I mean, being at where, I know by their own words, was it Mr. Bonk, is that the?
Yeah.
From the airport?
Yeah, Ken Bonk.
Like you said, they weren't gonna be breaking ground till next year anyway, so rather doing a conditional approval now, it's time is of the essence, but not that crucial. So I just assume see a complete package and we give the marching papers and it's done, you're not coming back here, there's no second guessing, there's no we for guts.
Yeah, we'd like to try and get it.
Not personally, I'm just saying.
Sorry, not to interrupt you.
No, it's fine.
We'd like to try and get it wrapped up for your next meeting.
Yeah.
So that the airport can go ahead and apply for the grant and do all the things that they need to do to keep the process going.
Exactly. And we'll do it, we'll expedite it as fast as you, if you guys, if you feel you're fit, in two weeks, we could do it in a couple of weeks as well, but if you feel you just want the month, you tell us, we meet the second and the fourth doozies.
Okay.
So whatever you guys, whatever you want, I mean, we can go over it right now, but it's no sense, because if it's conditions and stuff like that can be met and satisfied through Whitman and Bingham, then I think I could speak for the whole board, we're just fine with that, correct?
That's the best idea.
Yeah.
John, you good yet?
Yeah, I agree, yes.
So really, it's your call, I mean, we can go, we can go over the review, or we can just wait, and if you wanna pick a date, we can continue it right now and make it that easy for you.
I'd probably make a date for your next meeting.
Okay, in two weeks?
Yes.
Which would be... Let's just clarify here, there are no conflicts, that would be the July twenty fifth?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is everybody good with that date?
Yeah.
Anthony, I'm sure you're fine, I mean, just let it run like that?
That's fine, like I said, it's, the comments, I think, are, that can be taken care of with some updates, most of them were already taken care of, I believe a couple abstained ones, I think there's a, there's a way to take care of it through our satisfactions.
Okay.
We're pretty confident this is gonna be an easy resolution.
Okay, so as long as you guys feel, you know, comfortable that the two weeks is satisfactory enough time to button it up with Whitman and Bingham, we'll wait for their final review, and we should be able to close it up at the next public hearing.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Is there a timeframe where if there's a hangup or something?
No, I mean-
If there's a need pushed back, is there a timeframe where you need to be notified of that?
No, I mean, I'm just saying, if two weeks is fine, if you want, we can go to the first, we can go to the first meeting in August too, which would be the eighth, in some reason I have something on that meeting. Okay, I have a conflict-
I'm on the twenty fifth for now.
I have a conflict on the eighth myself, so, so you want, we can just, we'll just go to the twenty fifth, is that, everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
At six thirty, once again? Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Till August twenty, I mean, July twenty fifth at six thirty?
July twenty fifth. Yep. At six thirty.
Wait, your second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of that? Okay, unanimous, alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for taking a long ride out. Sure ride home, there you go. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thanks, guys. Alright. Moving right along, okay, we have public hearing continuation, was that advertised time of six forty five? It was, right, okay, so we need to wait on that, and we can go, is Alan here? Alan's not here. We could take you, but we can't, because it's scheduled timeframe, you know what I mean, so we have to wait fifteen minutes, or ten minutes?
I thought I was late.
No, 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 six forty five, so we'll just, just hang tight, alright. We have, actually- Are you Donald? And Donald Blood?
Correct.
Alright, we can take you now if you want, as far as whatever you got.
Alright, I purchased a piece of property from-
Wanna come up here just, we can just hear you a little bit better?
Okay. Yeah, I purchased a piece of property from Alfred Cormier, forty-four Albert Drive, it's a piece where my land ends, and it abuts the city cul-de-sac down there.
Okay.
And you have the blueprints and so forth from Brian Zock.
Are those them right there on the top there, Charlie?
And the signed paperwork that I left with Clark the other day.
Oh, that's Dana, that's Dana's.
Yeah.
Let's see what we got, we'll open it up, okay?
It's a pretty small piece of property, it just kind of binds me so that nobody, when they buy the other pieces of coke and put it on the wheel.
Is that saying if it's not, if you don't own it, you don't own it?
Yeah, exactly. Been maintaining it for twelve years.
Alright, so you're talking just at the outlot, one point three zero five, I mean, no, let's take that back, one thousand three hundred and five square feet, is that the passing question that we're adding on?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a piece that's coming off Alfred's and going to yours?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody notice-
It takes us out back into the woods.
Everybody see that little triangle?
Little triangle right here, okay.
He's just adding on to his existing frontage and whatnots, Dennis. He already owns, where it says on the left, house forty four is actually his, and the other remaining land is Alfred Cormier's, which still has sufficient frontage from what I'm looking at right here. So it's to convey the outlot of one thousand three hundred and five square feet from Cormier's property to Mr. Blood's property. You wanna go on the checklist, Charlie, see what we got?
You got it.
Alright. Do we have the forms and all, okay, yeah, go right down to yourself, Charlie, we gotta do- Do you have any in our checklist? Damn, you're getting good, you're getting better. It's a live and learn, no, it's good.
Somebody I want.
No, that's your second one.
Where are all the-
What's it say, need a what? Oh, need four copies of that.
Yeah, he had four copies.
Yep.
Do you have the checklist?
That's how I said the checklist, you have a checklist?
That's the one I don't have.
Okay, alright, well, we pretty much know it by heart, so we can go right down. No, it's fine, alright, four copies of Form A?
Yep.
Okay, a check for three hundred dollars? Are those stamped copies, by the way?
These are not.
He went to Carol, and she said he had to wait for the meeting to get them signed.
Correct, and she didn't tell me about any charges.
Okay. That's fine, but we need a check for four, for three hundred dollars for the A and R itself.
Okay.
Do you have the check, would you tonight?
Don't, because I didn't know there was any cost.
Okay.
Obviously, I live down the street, I can long old get one and come back.
You wanna do that?
I will.
Yeah, we can-
That's what it takes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I'm leaving for vacation on Saturday morning for a week, so I-
It's made up in a town as well than three hundred dollars, it's just, it's just A and R, it's a set fee that we have.
Okay.
So we'll be here.
I wanna go through the rest of the checklist first, just in case.
Well, no, we hold him up, you go get his check, we can go back, we can go over, he doesn't have to be present, we go over the checklist as well, so.
Oh, that's true, okay.
We got like six minutes till we get onto the other public hearing real quick. Okay, so, okay, we have four ma, four form, four copies.
Yeah.
Alright. Lots on a qualified way.
Yeah.
Albert Drive.
Nearest marker.
Nearest markers or monuments identified.
Yeah.
Existing structures on lot identified.
Yeah, yeah.
Sufficient frontage?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Remaining, remaining land, okay, zoning district, if any?
Our A one, it's there.
What were you saying it? Alright, and, I'm just going by memory, there.
I know.
Terrible thing to waste. And remaining land to have sufficient acreage and frontage.
Yeah.
That's coming from.
Approval does not require-
And owner, name of owners on abutting properties listed on plan, yes. John, what was the other one?
The approval under the statement.
Control, yep, those five are there for five signatures, or actually four, because in that case, so, alright, with that being said, we'll wait till he comes back, we get a check for three hundred dollars, and we can vote it, okay?
Okay.
Everybody go with that?
Yeah.
It was too long.
Want us to sign it?
Who needs a list? We'll thank Carol.
You think we can do Dana's and Dana's and six minutes?
We only got four minutes, we have to open the public hearing for Lafayette real quick, so, and-
Do you want to do minutes?
Yeah, we can do minutes, if you guys wanna do minutes, get that out of the way. Yeah, see, that's good, the way you do it, I mean, it's like a, just to the point. Alright, I'll take a moment, motion.
I'll make a motion and approve the minutes.
Of six thirteen seventeen?
Six thirteen seventeen?
Anybody want to second that motion? At least we're reading. Dennis? Okay. Um, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, accepting the minutes?
Abstain.
Okay, John, okay, four and one John stinks, because he wasn't responding, okay, so the minutes pass, thank you. Okay, it's six, six forty five on my clock. I've taken a motion to reopen the public hearing for Lafayette Road acceptance as a town road.
Still moved? Second.
Alright, all in favor? Unanimous, okay.
No new news yet.
No new knows, no new news? Still waiting for what, calcs from Mr. Aldrich?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, I sent him a text, I sent him an email, called him, and he just hasn't responded, so that tells me he's not finished yet.
Okay.
I've asked Kathleen Van Dyke herself to call him, just to touch base with him, because I don't know whether we're missing each other in translation or-
Was Steve also, how did we leave the, the abutting property with that swale and whatnot, did we come to resolve on it, I don't know, because Wes is not here.
On lot eight?
Is that the one up from Mr. Gavin's property?
Yeah, oh yeah, we discussed it.
Yeah.
Can't do anything until we know what we're doing.
As far as with the calcs from Steve, correct? Okay, alright, we're gonna make this real short and sweet, do we want, how much time do you think we, do we, we just continue the other public hearing until two weeks from now? We have to come for that, we might as well just continue on, you can even notify us via email, that, you know, ask for continuation, we'll continue it, you don't need to be present to do it.
Do you have a business card or something with the email on it?
Oh, you can write down the email.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Phones are all messed up down here.
The what?
The phones are all messed up down here.
Yeah, I know, every time I call-
I call Conservation, I get the plan board.
Yeah, well, that's same office.
Oh, is it?
It's land use, it's land use.
Oh, okay, well, it didn't say that, so.
That's why you can pay your water bill at the light department.
I know.
That's the way we do things in town.
Other than that, I don't have anything for you.
Okay, so with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to six forty five on, we say July twenty, um-
Twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth at six forty five?
Still moved? Second.
Second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. And then what we'll do is we'll kick the can, based on like information or no information, we'll just, we'll kick it out like thirty or sixty days, because we, you know, rather than just keep it on. Okay.
I know it's maybe done with this coming.
Alright, very good, thank you, sir, we just voted that, right? Yes, vote, okay, done, alright, alright.
Oh, my email?
Wait for Mr. Blood to come back, Al, Drew one?
Yes.
You're up, sir.
Okay, I'll let Julian handle this, I guess.
I'm Julian Vetruba from the Wingon Environmental Design.
Say that again? Hang on, we'll, let's wait till, okay, wait just a moment. Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Alright, start over.
Hi, I'm Julian Vetruba from the Wingon Environmental Design.
Okay.
Carruth Road and Cross Road.
Actually, one, why don't we take one, and then you can pass a couple.
Leave the mile hours somewhere separate, we don't wanna see that right now. Okay. Digging on this.
Got, uh- The two pieces will be over there.
You'll bring it down, I know how this works.
Alright, now we have three sides, the west side here, we've got Al's house that he just built is right here on this piece of property.
Where is the, is that off of?
Carruth Road.
Which is Brooks Village, right, for all intents and purposes?
Al, Brooks Village is, um, it turns, it turns into like right here.
Okay.
To Brooks Village, where the town line comes across, and what we've got is-
Wait, isn't, wait, isn't, wait a minute, hang on, isn't Brooks Village to the Phillipsen Line, it's not?
Yeah.
Then why does it say Carruth Road?
Because Carruth Road turns from there to Templeton. You know what I mean, I mean, it's Brooks Village Road from Phillipsen Line on Phillipsen Side, there's Carruth Road on the Templeton Side.
To the center of Brooks Village?
Well, Seth? To the center of Brooks Village is Carruth Road.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's okay, alright, thanks, Glenn, alright. I thought it was to the Phillipsen Line, okay, I see, corrected.
Center of Brooks Village to Phillipsen Line is Carruth Road.
Like Fuller's House is on Carruth Road?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I just, I just know that from what, okay.
Because UPS always says, is this Phillipsen, Brooks Village, they go, no, this is Templeton, Brooks Village.
Okay. Alright, go on. Everybody up to speed then, I just wasn't, okay. Alright, go ahead, thanks.
The house that Al lives in, we've got a four point three seven acre.
Alright.
With over two hundred and twenty-two feet of frontage.
Yep.
Which is over, and on Cross Road, which comes off of Carruth Road, we've got a hundred and fifty-three point four eight feet of frontage on a two point oh two acre, and then we've got a unique situation of half and half, but we meet the criteria for both towns, so we've got more than enough frontage and more than enough area.
Alright, is, is there any other houses down on this road, on Cross Road?
There's a house, there's one here.
Well, he fronts, he is, he comes off, they come off of Carruth Road.
And then there's a house down there.
Which comes off the other end, Phillipsen.
Right, there's nothing on it.
Okay. The public way, is there, um, bleh?
When I went to the town clerk, we received this document saying that it is a public.
Yeah, how wide is that road?
Oh, between, it's variables gravel, it's, uh, ten to twelve feet.
Alright, well, it needs to be minimum twenty feet.
It's thirty-two feet, isn't it?
Well, the width of the, of the, of the right of way is-
Thirty-two feet.
Yeah, thirty-two feet, but the actual gravelled passage, so that'll have to be dealt with by the inspector.
Actually, it's gonna be dealt with this board, because the only way you're gonna subdivide off of that road, we need to make sure it's suitable.
Suitable to-
Suitable within, hang on, don't interrupt me, please. Suitable for width and grade and access for fire and emergency personnel as well, so we may have to have you improve this road to town standards with a cul-de-sacs and trucks and safety can get out of there.
Well, this goes right through to Phillipsen.
Do you wanna build it right through, out to the other end?
It ends, like, right, right here, is where they, Phillipsen and the town line, so Templeton owns to here.
Right. But what I'm saying is right now, is that we're gonna have to review it, do a site walk or something, with peer review, hang on a minute, Frank, to make sure it's accessible, but accessible not only just for frontage for these lots, but accessible for emergency personnel, so we're gonna have to have the fire department and public safety go up, take a look at that. Frank?
Yeah, I know the road you're talking about, but roughly, you're not exaggerating, about fifty years, that road's been an issue with Phillipsen and Templeton, and never could make it happen of ownership or whatever, so, and not wide enough, a whole bunch of reasons, for many years, it's been a big sore subject for both teams.
It would have to be, it would have to be basically, just so, the way I read the law, and this is what I gotten from. Like thirty, thirty two feet or something like that.
Well, from an A and R standpoint, we went to the town clerk, she gave me this letter saying that it is a public way.
Yeah, it's a public way, you can drive, you can drive your bicycle up there, dirt bike.
But we have, we have legal frontage on a public way and legal area.
Okay.
I understand that the, the road typically, the building, if the building inspector deems that it's passable, then he'll issue a report.
Right, and that's, and that's when, and that's when we'll sign off on the A and R, and that we don't do it backwards.
This isn't backwards, this is forwards.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I've already heard enough, because I'm not gonna get into a ton of this with you, right now, it's an unpassable road.
I've got a two-wheel drive Chevy pickup truck that I-
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, listen, this is my meeting, not yours, don't crack jokes about it, because I'm serious.
I'm not cracking jokes.
So submit, submit it right here, we have twenty-one days to render a decision, okay? And what we'll do is we'll check with public safety and whatnot in the meantime, so it's your call, however you wanna do it, alright? You've officially submitted it, so how many A and Rs do you have right here?
I've got this one, and I've got another.
Okay, so submit three hundred dollars per lot to make it official, because otherwise it's not official, alright, and then we're gonna take it under advisement, we have twenty-one days to render our decision.
Okay.
Now that you've submitted, you need to follow through, otherwise it's not a submittal, once it walks in the door.
I understand.
You gotta follow through with it.
Hey, question, um, it's kinda awkward on what lots what, because every lot has, because of the angle of the town line, um, there's gonna be-
This one's split.
Right, is, it's like, some of them's in Templeton and some of it's in Phillipsen, in other words, there's gonna be four lots in all, but one of them's completely, two of them are gonna be completely in Phillipsen. You know what I mean, you wanna show them?
Where's the sec, where's the second one you're talking about, I'm looking at this one right here, the lot two.
Phillipsen recognized with that road.
This Carruth Road. This connects to this like so. So this same crossroad is a lot, two lots down here and then one up here on Brooks Village Road.
So this one's in Phillipsen, here's the Phillipsen-Templeton line.
Yeah, it's the same lot that we're talking about here, are you talking, there's more over here?
Yeah, well, there's one here in Phillipsen, there's one here in Phillipsen, then there's one in Templeton here.
Okay.
And there's one in Templeton here, so this, you know, even though there's land in both of them, am I getting two lots, am I paying for two lots, is two houses gonna be in Templeton? You know, you know what I'm saying, am I gonna pay you six hundred dollars, because two lot, houses are gonna be in Templeton, and this one's, even though-
If we're, if, if we're A and R, if we're A and R, if we're A and R-ing frontage, then it's Templeton.
Okay, there is, there is frontage, there is frontage in all four lots that will be, you know, well-
If it's, if it's frontaged in Templeton, and that, that's usually what, how we run it by, I mean, back lot, it's gonna automatically be, you know what I mean, part of the plan, so to speak?
Like this one, excuse me, right here has a lot of frontage in Phillipsen, I don't need the frontage in Templeton, but part of the lot is still in Templeton, so I'm still paying for it.
In order for you to subdivide it, you need to subdivide in Templeton to make, where you pull your building from it from doesn't really matter, but if you're-
So I gotta do four lots.
If you're subdividing any piece of sliver of land in Templeton, it still needs to be considered an act, because we're still drawing that line in Templeton's land. So.
Okay, so I need to submit?
I didn't know there was a second one, yeah, so if that's the case, whatever.
So I, I got four of them in all, because there's nine two.
So it's three hundred dollars per lot for submittal, and we're gonna have to take it under advisement, and we have twenty-one days to render a decision, and, and that's, and quite honest with you, right now, it's gonna be a public safety decision, and I don't care if it's on papers, it's a town road, I need to find out what the legal status is of this, and if public safety's gonna take it on themselves, whether it be, whether it be plowing, maintenance, ambulance, fire department?
No.
No, it's, you couldn't, you wouldn't even know where the road is if you drove up there right now.
Okay.
It's that type of a, like, it's, it's one of the things that slipped through the cracks of town, right? But-
Thing is that it does go through, so if you would mention a cul-de, I don't think that would be-
Right. Right, but the way, the way the statute reads, it needs to be suitable width and grade for what the use is gonna be. But that's in its, in its present condition, it's not when you go up there right now and clear it out thirty feet wide, we need to look at it as its present state, and if we can't, and if we can't figure that, we can get, public safety, I, I recommend the fire chief, police chief, what have you, our public safety committee go up and look at it, and if that's the case, you will have to bring the road up to pub, to subdivision standards in order to do it.
Well, would it be subdivision standards or to a, um-
Town, which is, it's the same thing, it's the same thing.
Well, not really.
We could maybe, we could, no, wait, keep in mind, it wouldn't have to be, it wouldn't have to maybe be sidewalks in twenty-four feet wide, but it's, it's suitable width and grade for the use, so the lowest we have, as far as a lane, I think is twenty-two feet wide.
Well, I mean, I realize that, that is, I mean, it's grown and basically loomed and stuff, I can drive down in my Miata, no problem, but, but I know it has to be wide, we knew, I knew that.
But we have to look out for is the, the clientele that you sell the lots, the houses to, and now they're, they're coming to town hall and they're screaming at the highway to pile while nobody's plowing the road, and they were like, hey, we've never maintained that road, and so we need to put our finger in that hole in the dam before it actually molds.
Now, this road wouldn't require a cul-de-sac, in my opinion, because it's a through road to Phillipsen.
Right, and that would be like, you know, public safety, if Phillipsen wants to get on board here and just make it straight through, then that'd be how we do it, you know?
Up to that.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's, we need to investigate, I don't, I haven't, I know where it is, I've never been through it, because I didn't realize that we actually even went through.
Yeah, I never done nothing like this, I just feel like, you know, that I did all the research, and that it is a-
Yeah, when I asked him to sign that, luckily, the town clerk found that it's on the books as an actual way.
Did she say the date, it was accepted as a town road or whatever?
She has the whole.
Just gotta go back to the early nineteen hundreds. Uh, Dana?
I'm just curious whether you got the electricity still.
Is it poles up there now, I mean, okay, that's fed, that's fed to Templeton, okay.
Do we run poles on, uh, roads that aren't sufficient, I'm not too sure, I, I know you're a driver for one hole, but you, you run, you gotta check the road, they might even, they can make you do all underground?
Well, I asked about it. They have to, yeah, they have to make it, no, they have to make it, um, what else, I've been talking to the light company already, I did talk to them, they said, yeah, you gotta have to trim trees and do whatever you have to do to make it so it's passable, so it's, you know, they can go access it.
About three different roads at one time, Mail Road, Valentine Road, Cross Road.
Does it say when it was accepted as a town?
It's a subdivision, they correct.
It would say taken by vote in such, such a-
Nineteen fifties, nineteen fifty-two, I go report, street by street, we're in nineteen fifty-two, so it was one of these that was always-
It was always, it's been here forever, yeah.
They didn't, they didn't discontinue or abandon it.
The milkman used to go that way, that's all they got named, the milk, it says a mill.
The Mail Road.
Oh, Mail Road.
The Mail Road, so, so that's what we got, so we'll leave.
Do we take this then?
The mile, do you want the mile hours, or you want the, um?
Well, it's entirely up to you, it's not, technically, it's an official submittal.
Yes.
So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna render you a decision based on what we see, and right now, I don't have enough information, me personally, but as chairman of the board, to say, oh yeah, it's suitable for houses up there, we need to investigate more, Dana?
I, I think all roads in town that would, like the permit does now, that go underground, stop, I think they run holes, um-
They don't run poles anymore.
They're, they're not gonna run poles, I'm sure.
But these are some of the things we, we need to get, we need to get ironed out, um, in lieu of, um-
Give it a first poll, that's it.
That's it, right, yep.
I, myself, right now, we're, we're, we're in a quagmire, because I know where I stand on this, I know we're not gonna get it resolved in twenty-one days.
So.
So, but I also, no, but what I'm saying too, to be fair to the applicant- But I also, no, but what I'm saying too, to be fair to the applicant, all right, um, are we gonna take their money knowing what we're probably gonna be voting, but. I'm kind of a, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm trying to be fair, I mean, we're all from town, Al's from town, you know what I mean, it, it doesn't matter if you're from town or not, it's still a, a landowner thing, but there's a lot more there than, than meets the eye. But, um, I, I would be, if the board's willing and able, I'd be willing to render a decision without them putting the money on the table just for this, this reason, cause we're all looking, basically, I'm saying, take their mile out back, cause I know which way I'm gonna rule already. I mean, I could render a decision right now.
Can we consider a non-official submittal?
No, we did that before, we're, I'm not gonna mention no names, and we got hung out, we hung on it, so we're not gonna do that.
They haven't submitted a check, I'm sorry.
I think we have to treat it like any other one, you're gonna submit it, you pay, that's it, why, you start breaking our rules of reg. Can't keep doing it.
Well.
We got burnt too many times.
It's not a matter of being burnt, it's a matter of just rendering the, the decision, but I'm also trying to be fair, it's twelve hundred bucks, it's twelve hundred bucks, we know which way it's going, it's not a small technicality, it's something that should have come in for a, a software view, not a submittal, but it is here in front of us, so. I'm just trying to be fair, is it, is it our call to say?
What are the options?
Did they submit a check for twelve hundred dollars?
No.
So that's not an official submission, I would have them take it back.
Do you wanna submit it officially?
Well, let me ask a question, since we're kinda speaking, you know?
Yeah.
My boy here just asked, cause I'm kinda moved and it's all things on me, um, if you, it sounds like you're gonna deny it to me, I mean, it sounds like.
It's based on lack of information for the road, it's, it's basically what it boils down to.
Now, I'm looking at it from a legal point of view, is, okay, you're denying it, but that road can definitely be, I think, based on what I know, you know, I think it can be twenty-two feet wide, it can be a, you know, passable road. Does your decision come in saying it's not a road now, it's not, it's not.
We're not gonna say it's not a road, it's, it's, it's gonna be basically, it doesn't, it doesn't make, doesn't meet the standard, it's simple standard of suitable width and grade.
Or it's not a. It's not passable. Make the standard. But.
As it is like right now, but I'm gonna have to check with, um, we're gonna have to do some of our own research, because I don't believe that, um. You can't just go up there and mow the grass wider right now, say, here you go, here's a road, because there's public safety issues up there that are gonna have to be addressed, like fire department and, and police. And, 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 and maintenance and whatnot, because we don't allow private roads in town anymore, unless the town, cause we get the highway department involved as well.
Which I understand though. My point is, if you were to deny it, would it be denied based on the road being up to a certain standard, would it be?
Yeah, lack of standard, so to speak.
So, in other words, would I be able to say, okay, that doesn't mean it's denied forever?
No.
That this means I have to do what I have to do?
We may have, yeah, you, it, it's, it's. My planning board slash personal opinion is that it's, the road's substandard for development, to develop houses, it has nothing to do with the A and Rs, if you have, if you have frontage off a town road, you're frontage off a town road.
Well, that's why.
The A and R stands.
Right.
But the A and R's not gonna stand with the road basically, it's there on paper, but it's not there in, 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 in true fashion.
You have an A and R where you can't get a building permit because it's not passable, it's like if you were doing a subdivision.
It's, it's, it's substandard, right.
You might have an A and R or a subdivision that gets approved, but the road has to be up to a certain standard.
I mean, there's a, there's a street in town, the old Lamb City Road that crosses down on Patriots Road, it goes through, the, the road caved out, it's, it's the swamp now. I mean, if you look on paper, the road's still there.
Right.
You're not gonna get a building permit on it.
Right, which I understand.
It's, it's in, it's under the river now, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or the road over by the airport, it doesn't exist, it's on paper, but it doesn't exist.
So, I understand that, I think that road couldn't be brought up to definitely standard of driving, passing and all that, without it being, I'm just asking that, okay, I'm gonna do this, and we're gonna have to go through a process of getting that road up to a certain standard.
Oh, yeah. I'd, I'd, I'd maybe, maybe suggest, we can, you, you, might wanna, we might wanna check with Phillipsen too and find, I don't know who Phillipsens, whether it's their planning board or their highway department, do they plow right up to the Templeton line now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not worried about Phillipsen then, I mean, it's, with that being said, Charlie?
So, what, if, what if we look at this as not a submittal, I, I'm just kinda curious as to, you know, how we handle that?
Yeah. Well, we have technically twenty-one days to act on an A and R, okay, when it comes in the door, I don't wanna get into technical, we, we actually had somebody do that before, and they walked out with it.
Mm-hmm.
And then they get a constructive approval, and we were the first ones to kick, according to Copman Page, that we, we, um, appealed, you can appeal any approval.
Right.
And we appealed a constructive approval, but it had to go to the courts, and it, and it, we still won, but it's still something you don't wanna, a road you don't wanna go down.
But if we don't get the check from them, how, is that?
It, it's the same thing, it walked in the door, that's the problem, so, even if you walk out of here with this right now, I wanna keep one copy in description, because we're still gonna render a decision based on whether they're walking out the door with it or not, is to cover our butts.
Uh, now, if I, what happens if I submit it official and you deny it, would you, would, that's my whole point, I guess, if you deny it with a set of, set of, right, conditions, conditions.
Conditions, why you deny it?
So then I could meet the conditions and I, then it would, then it would be and go forward, that's, I mean, I was.
And it goes forward.
Dana?
Isn't, I mean, we've been through this before, nothing against Amos and all, and I mean, like.
No.
But I mean, we've been through this before, giving out permits for gravel roads, and people bitching, you can't plow, don't we have a standard in town for road, I'm, Amos, you built a bunch of roads in town, is it just gonna be the same road as you built Musket Drive and all over?
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say, don't we have a standard for road, I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, I don't think.
We have different, we have.
Even like the homeowners, if you want a gravel road, I mean, what kinda road are you talking about?
We have the same. We have the same standards as far as design standards, but there's different widths, whether it's a collector's street, a through street, or a lane, and that controls the width.
But you have to put.
But you're still, you're still, you're still gravel, you're still two and a half inches of binder, inch and a half of top, you, we still have that standard, we could, we can waive sidewalk stuff like that, because it's a.
And then up sidewalk and dry.
We have to basically, what's it boiled, what boils down to is we need to review the standards again, and that's when we would pull, like Whitman and Biggum in to do that on this, on their.
I thought we were beyond giving permits for gravel roads, I thought we were doing the same master plan type of thing.
This is a town road. So, technically, you work on that town road, understand?
I also.
Me too, permission and guidance.
Right. Right.
So we could actually petition the town to fix this road, cause this is a town road.
Forever. Well, all we're trying to do is bring it up to a certain standard.
All those guys have the same ringtone.
Being that, the thing is, we're not asking nothing special, I mean, the way I look at it is that road's existing, and we just wanna bring it up to the standard that, that it has to be to be passable and to be workable.
There are, there are gravel roads in town that are gravel that the town maintains.
Whether they like it or not like it, I.
I don't even know the answer to that question.
It's not a, it's not a brand new something.
Cook Road.
There's a gray road, where?
Young's misery.
Doug's misery, uh, that road off Old River Road with Kenny Case's, those are paved in the body, they're all.
Do we have roads with houses on them that are gravel today?
Yeah, but the town knows it all.
Young's misery is gravel when there's a house on it.
Cook Road too.
Yeah, yeah.
The town, you know, I mean, that road off, with Kenny Case's, all the roads.
And that, every town has it.
Off of, uh, Phillipsen, off of, uh.
Oh, yeah, Cook Road is, yeah, Cook Road is.
Oh, is that?
Riley Switch Road.
Coles, is it, um, Codis?
Codis lives down there, yeah, Richard Codis.
The, the town maintains that to his driveway?
Yeah, they plow that, yeah, yeah, it's got a town sign on the end, says Riley Switch.
Okay.
That turns into a, that turns into a, Philtrial list.
And EPW.
That's Leland, yeah.
What would you guys want us to do to this?
I don't think, I don't think we would approve making any dirt roads, a town except a dirt road.
Well, we're not making one, it's one that's already existed, we're just bringing it up with a standard that is the.
I don't, I don't.
That's. That's the difference.
Dirt, is it, leave it a dirt road?
Well, yeah, that's how it is the rest of the way into Phillipsen.
Uh, I don't think that would ever fly.
Well, I tell you what, I. I just don't know, and it's a question, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I just assume so you guys do your full submittal, so we can render a decision, cause it's gonna be contingency of bringing the road up to standard.
Mm-hmm.
The A and, the A and As will still hold.
Right.
You know what I mean?
I, I, I agree with that.
The A and As will still hold, but it's gonna be a denial based on, on, on the road condition, and bring it up to, to public standards, you know what I mean?
Right. Doesn't that meet, doesn't that keep it moving forward, until we can get to a certain standard?
It, it's, it's still gonna be, it's still gonna be a denial, but it's gonna give you a direction as to somebody, it needs, somebody else needs to make the call, it's gonna come, ultimately come back to the planning board, but it's gonna need to go through the proper channels, whether through public safety, highway department, and, and so on and so forth, and we're gonna have to check with council to find out what we need, what we can do, Dennis?
What happens to those lots that are divided by the town line?
I can't hear you.
What happens to the lots that are divided by the town line?
What do you mean?
So like that one is split.
So with this, this lot, it's two acres.
Depends on where he builds a house. Right, if he builds a house on this side, it'll go to the town of Templeton, if he builds the house driveway here and goes in the end.
Well, there's not enough, I don't think there's enough size there to build on one side or the other.
It don't matter, you, you can build, you can build a house in the middle of a town, in a town line, go right through your house.
But we would.
Yeah, that's.
There's two acres.
You kinda don't wanna do that, because the taxes.
Assessors don't like that.
The assessors don't like that.
Yeah, right, we would, we would.
So you try to keep it in one or the other as possible.
Uh, this would be in Phillipsen, there's still a whole full acre in Phillipsen, there's a full acre in Templeton that's on that one lot.
Is it two acres, I, I did.
Yeah, yeah, so it is a full acre with like two hundred and something for furniture in Phillipsen for that lot, and this one's completely in Templeton, and this one is the front, whole front.
I've got, not that it matters to you guys, yeah, I've got a similar one in, in town of Rockland, there's not even, there's not even a cop road on the, on the piece of land, but it's a town road.
It's a paper street.
Paper street that they never discontinued or never abandoned.
But they put one house out there?
No, it's gonna be seven, but what the town's requiring us to do on that one, they, they did, cause this is a no approval required, cause I got town, I got approved that it's a town road.
Right.
But, there's no way he's gonna pull any building permits without that road coming up to what the DPW and the fire chief said were, were required.
And building inspector, but, yeah, public safety, it's a public safety.
So that's, so that's how that one works, so if he submits this, you can, I hate to use this word, I know I sound like a wise guy, but it's a no approval required, we have to prove we have area, and we have to prove we have frontage.
Right.
Now, can we get a building permit? Probably not, but that's not this board's purview, it's the building inspector, but you can make it known to the building inspector and the fire chief and the DPW that, hey, go look at this road before you give any building permits, and we need to bring it to a safe standard. So that's the route that I suggested to Al, that we, we try to follow through, but it's your voice.
Right.
Wouldn't you be better off to come in with a, a more update plan, showing the road, the width, uh, the pavement, whatever you're gonna do?
Well, they're gonna have to do that later.
Well, we didn't really know what, I really didn't know how to approach it.
He's not proposing for pavement, for the Phillipsen one is, is gravel road now.
You expect to leave it gravel?
Expect to leave it gravel.
How they ever fly?
Right.
I'm just some.
Well, I tell you, this is what I, what, I, we have twenty-one days to render a decision, I would like you guys to do the, the, the three hundred dollars per lot to make this official submittal, because us denying it, either way, it's, it's gonna get denied, and I'm assuming I'm speaking for the board, because of lack of information. If, if you, then if you prove yourself, it's gonna get denied based on this here, the A and Rs will still, will still carry it, so in other words, you come back in, whether it's a, a month or two months or whatever, with all the answers, we're not gonna recharge you for the same A and Rs.
Right, just an ongoing thing.
Right, so it's not gonna be, it's, it's not gonna be a conditional approval, it's not even, it's not even gonna be endorsed, it's gonna be a letter of denial, but it's gonna give you the reasons as to why it's denied.
Right, that's what we need, the reasons to be able to move forward, whatever has to be done.
To move forward, that's like somebody can't go to the board of appeals unless they've been denied for something, you know, that's exactly it.
Do we have to consult the fire chief and the DPW?
Right.
We'll have to reach out to public safety.
I assume we'd have to talk to, I think the fire chief more than we would.
We'll generate, we'll generate through, from the office, we'll generate a, a general email, and I'll see if I can set up some type of a, an appointment with all public officials, or maybe a sight walk or something, or at least get the ball rolling with that way.
So when we deny it and they come back in though, that's just the same continuation though, right?
We're hoping you, we're hoping we're not having to deny, we're hoping that you have a bullshit, maybe a list of what needs to be done as part of this.
Right, but what I'm saying is that, we're gonna deny it for the reasons above, but if we're taking the, the twelve hundred dollars, when they come in and get those issues resolved.
Okay, I gotcha.
Their, their, their lots are already paid for.
I gotcha, okay.
Does everybody agree with that?
That's the reason.
That's as long as, that's what I was getting at, I just.
I'm trying to be as fair, but I need to be fair to the town, I need to be fair for us to submit, so we actually have something to do.
Oh, no, no, I did. I wanted, I wanted to make sure we weren't gonna deny, you know, they came back in, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we'd have to look at, I, I think the, I think the minimum we can get away with, I think is, is considered a lane, and I think it's twenty, twenty, I think it's twenty or twenty-two, which is in a, you look in the.
It's like thirty-two.
You look in the definition, I think it's lane, which is the smallest caliber of, of road. This would be a lane, it's not a, it's not a collector's street, there's not everybody coming down there, there's no rush hour, not now, and there won't be either, so I, I think that a minimum.
Right, right, right. 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 Two houses in Templeton.
Minimum standard as far as width is what, what I was talking, not.
Yeah.
But, like I said, we'll talk to public safety and, um, our highway superintendent, and, and if, if they feel that, you know, um, you know.
Yeah, we'll just keep moving forward to, till we can render a package. The way I look at it is.
Cutting it out and putting crushed gravel or whatever, I mean, it's gonna be up to highway, cause it's not our say.
Right. Right, cause they make, they.
So it's kinda like, work with the applicant, cause it is a road, so bring it up to a standard.
Be lucky, you know, fix it away.
That's why, that's, yeah, but, yeah, I doubt that.
It's not gonna happen.
To a standard.
You don't have the resources for that.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a town road, we, we're, we're insisting on potholes, right, so it matches, so it matches everything else?
So it's gonna, it's gonna fit in everything else.
Get a brand new road and we dig some holes, um, yeah, no, just.
All right.
I think that, uh, you can eventually, I don't have a problem in my town, so I think it is a town road, and eventually it can be worth it, bringing it up to a standard that, I think, would be acceptable.
Okay. So while we do that, Al, if you want, list the, list the, list on your memo for which check, for which lots, you know, two, three, four, whatever, you got one, two, three, four, whatever.
All right.
Yeah, we're gonna just take it.
Do you own that now, the road?
Yes, yes, I do.
In other words, you own the road?
Well, I own both sides of the road.
No, he doesn't own the road.
The town owns the road.
The town owns the road.
Town owns the road.
I, I get, I get tax bills on, like, Templeton is a little chunk of land here, cause, cause it crosses the road.
How many acres total do you have up there, Al?
In all, all the land is like forty almost, thirty.
Templeton and Phillipsen.
Templeton, Phillipsen. Close to, close to forty, thirty-five.
Did that go with that property originally, it didn't, it was backland originally?
No. This land is the, is the last of all the land that all these other people, that you can't see down the road.
Oh, that built over the years?
Right, this is the original, this stuff is, took them forever to pursue, so they had, I wanted to be in here a couple of months ago, um, all this stuff is like sixteen hundreds, you know, and, and, I mean, just go by that.
Oh, yeah. King's Grant kinda stuff.
Go by the road that looks like a bear and, you know, you know what I mean?
Real, yeah.
Something like that, roads.
Next to the great birch tree.
Really, I mean.
No, next to the big elm tree, they're all gone, you know?
Exactly, you know, stuff like that, so I spent a lot.
DNA swap on stumps.
The other unique situation is this also goes to Phillipsen.
Phillipsen.
Right, see, that's the thing we're doing, is we're going to Phillipsen.
And in Phillipsen, there is no question, because we've got, they've got the road here, and the road is here, so. That's, and the same thing here, so, when is the Phillipsen meeting?
Next week.
So you can't leave the mile out, but we can leave the, the paper copies.
Yeah, take the mile out, we, I wouldn't want the mile out here anyways.
Cause they're gonna go to Phillipsen and see if they own, endorse their side.
I do have one problem, is, um, on this road, that's one thing we're talking about, but my lot is also part of this pos, parcel.
The what?
My lot, my building house, my house, my, yeah, this is my house, so I kinda want.
Well, I didn't know, you, you physically have a house here now?
Yeah, I live there.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay.
Um, so the other thing is, I'm thinking, as we're talking, is I need to cut my lot off of this, I was just gonna do it all at the same time, so does this make it? Um, so the other thing is, I'm thinking, as we're talking, is I need to cut my lot off of this. I was just gonna do it all at the same time. So does this make it?
This is cutting it off.
Yes, but I mean, like, you wanna sign it.
No, but what I'm saying is that this, okay, right now it's, there's no line, it's all, it's all open, yeah.
Right.
Well, so I have to.
We'd have to draw.
We'd have to draw up another Mylar, if I cut this one, ask if we're dealing with this? Right?
I guess.
We're gonna have to cut this one off.
You should simplify it, so we can identify.
You know what I'm saying? I mean.
Yeah, this has, you have no issue with this lot?
No, it's.
You got two twenty.
The thing is, oh, that lot's already there.
Yeah. Just that is part of this whole parcel, that's the whole problem.
It's got this front, so.
I know what you're saying.
He needs, he's not the bank to have.
But, you're not getting anything here till we get a few answers and stuff anyway, so if you can, just hold off, let's hold off, let's get some kinda answers and see what we can get.
Or, we can cut this off like this.
Do another Mylar, come in for one lot.
Just for this and that's remaining land.
Just, just like they did with all the other lots, they cut off lots, I gotta cut off my own?
Like I'm gonna do ones that way, and then this one, yeah.
Yes, you're right, just do.
Do a simple, so, there's still, there's still frontage and stuff and land and all this on Phillipson Road.
He's right.
But is he, he's not creating, these are being created, this is an existing lot.
Well, this is all part of it.
No, that's all, right now, none of these lines are here right now, right.
Correct, correct. So I have to make this my lot.
So if we create this, I can come in with a plan that shows just that.
And we can just pull this lot, this, this land off of that.
Yeah, and then, then we'll be talking about these two, cause that's not part of it. And you can, we can leave this remaining land because there's road, there's frontage and Phillips.
Why don't you do this, if you do, I think you're gonna say, Julian, if you do that, why don't you just reference this plan on that? Well, so that way, with the A and I stuff, it keeps, it all, it keeps it, just reference this land, this plan, plan sheet, whatever, whatever.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be in limbo because of these, cause he's paying for this stuff now. So just reference this, this, this plan onto this remaining land that's gonna be staying.
I'm not sure how you want me to reference that.
It, cause if he's gonna cut, you're basically gonna come in here with a blank slate here.
Yep, actually, I was just gonna show.
Just, right, what I'm saying, but just reference the remaining, remaining.
Lot one is the same as on lot one on this one.
Yes, or just, yeah, lift that, or just put this re- remaining land, C plan, in reference to this, cause, cause this is, it's a continuation of it, you know what I mean?
Okay.
It's trying to just protect your twelve hundred bucks, and we've already, i- it's applied towards the lots, you know what I mean, so.
So write out a check for twelve hundred dollars.
Just list on your memo, it's, we can do it ourselves, it's four, it's.
So should it be fifteen hundred dollars?
It's four, how many lots we got?
Well, there's one, two, but it's.
There's gonna be three.
Even though they're not all gonna be in Templeton, but they, part of the land is in Templeton.
Whatever you have, if you have any, if you have a lot that's four, it's, it's, so it's twelve hundred, it's three hundred per lot.
So made out to what?
Ten of them. It's with a K. Templeton.
Alright, oh, I'm not dealing with that, one, two hundred. Twelve hundred.
Just make four checks.
Yeah.
Yeah, just make four, how many, one, two, three, oh, sorry, uh, John, you don't get anything tonight?
What's the date?
Today's the July night. Free slurpees at seven eleven.
Alright, pull all these up, I mean, put those together, I should say, and we're gonna have to still draft a letter.
What is our twenty day?
We only need one, actually. I mean, we need to get it to. I mean. Is that road identifiable enough for public safety to go out and take a walk on it?
Oh, yeah.
Can you actually?
Yeah, you can ride right down.
You can walk right through to Phillipson, like, so to speak, okay.
Well, if you stop me at all, it's the big area that the town, town put in, you can still walk around it.
Phillips, where it ends?
Jersey area.
Well, Phillipsen brought it there, it's, it's one of those, um, Jersey areas.
Alright. Alright.
Somebody stopped in there. If it wasn't for that, you could drive right through, that's the reason why the area is it, you drive, but never mind. Um, what lot number is this, like, so?
Yeah, just identify your lot numbers, just, just for your own reference, we, we're gonna.
Lots, one, two, three, and now I call these letters, it wouldn't be lot one and lot one, lot, A, B, and C.
Al, Al, just do this, just reference the plan, reference the plan numbers.
A, B, and C, cause that's remaining.
Julian, just reference your plan numbers on his memo, I guess he has it, so he's got it, but.
I mean, we're all set on I read, so.
Well, John, you must be ready for a vacation.
Not till November.
November?
I don't take vacations in the summer. No, no vacations in the summer.
So we're gonna be on the agenda for next time automatically?
No, no, this isn't a public hearing, this is just a A and I, so, we're gonna have to, we'll do, um, some.
How's it gonna work next, maybe, is somebody gonna do that?
Yeah, well, well, actually, we have to have it within twenty-one days anyways, it's gonna, I'm assuming it's gonna be a denial based on what we all just spoke of.
No denial.
But we'll do, uh.
An approval with conditions.
No, it has to be a denial, and then it'll state as the reason is to, um, for the road condition, and bring up the public safety to see if they wanna do it. Maybe my pile, hold on.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, we all set?
Okay.
Excellent, thank you very much.
I'll get back to you, Al, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out, make a couple of calls, and just, just, yeah, I'll just, I'll reach out, make a couple of calls and see how the public officials wanna handle it and do a sidewalk or something, you know what I mean?
If you want to make a phone number down, you might have it somewhere, but.
Excellent.
Alright, Al, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Blood, wanna come back up in a hurry? Oops, sorry.
Dennis has a quick.
Dennis?
When is that, twenty-one days from now?
Twenty-one days from now.
Yeah, when, we need to figure a date, so we're sure, we're falling short.
Oh, it's gonna be the, uh, the, the first.
August first?
August first would be the twenty-one days.
August first, okay.
It's gonna be three twosies from now. Alright, Mr. Blood? Down in Templeton?
Yep.
Okay, Charlie, that goes in you, there, you hold on to that in the folder, right?
Yep.
I'll leave that right there for now.
Alright, um. Guys are going back, Mr. Blood's plan, we've already reviewed it. Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to accept it as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Made, uh, John made the motion, Dennis seconded it, um, all in favor? Alright, okay, unanimous. Sign and send.
You got it.
Left.
You got it.
Do I need paperwork, so I can get a lawyer to do the deed thing?
Um, we're actually going to, we're gonna actually, you're gonna leave here with your Mylar signed, um, roll it, don't bend it, I'm sure they told you that. And actually, we can, I don't know how many papers, how many copies, is it just four copies here? It's just the next, I think there's the next one. It's the next one, you, once we sign the Mylar, you can roll it up in this one here to kinda protect it. And, um, bring it to, did Brian do that copy? Who did the copies off?
Yeah.
Just bring it to Brian and he'll, he'll, um, either get it to the registry or whatever, he'll handle it for you or whatever you want to do. Okay, yeah, whatever you, yeah, whatever you're gonna do, so. Yeah, cause you have the description, you just need to descri, just sign Mylar is your, that's where you're recording.
And somebody else has to sign off as well, or?
No, this is planning, we sign it, and then you're on, you know, all, all the signatures are, are on record in the registry deeds, so they'll send it through, they'll review it, okay?
Looked over before, so now they're trying to squeeze any they can.
You're in. I wish I could answer, I wish I could fix all my problems with three hundred bucks. No, that's alright. You work out of just getting ready to go on vacation and each other.
We were just talking about that on the radio today, are vacations still worth it because of all the things that you have to do prep to go on vacation?
Yeah, I'm kidding. This would be easier staying at home.
Do a staycation, just tell everybody you're leaving. Why are you getting it deleted out?
Yeah, I have to get rid of it. It showed me that, why not, well, the file, it's open. So, I decided to print that.
Ah, so you're sure he had anything over here tonight?
One busiest meetings we've had in a long time.
That's fine, it's just, it's the substance of, of what's going on, that's all, you know, A and I discussion, whatever, whatever. Once you're done signing.
Take those, Frank.
Guys do the Mylar yet? Are you doing it right now? Yeah, the Mylar, actually, Charlie will wrap it up in that, just to protect it.
So, and then, yeah, I've got this. Yep.
Cause the Mylar, you don't, if someone just pre-sits, they can't record it and you have to come back and do it. So once the ink dries. All signed dated, Charlie?
All signed and dated.
Make sure the ink's dried before you roll that onto it.
We're good.
Got it with your wife. I'm talking to him. Just hand that off to your lawyer, whoever.
Thank you so much. Enjoy vacation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice vacation.
Dana Blaze? You're up. What you got? Oh, do we have it here already?
I'm actually, uh, I wanna chop a piece of, piece of land off a piece that I own, um, of the parcels, uh, Stacy bought, came here to go up from Charlie's, from Charlie, yeah. So what we plan on doing is, uh, present tenant John Stacy, we just sold the thirsty turtle, is moving the floor, and he's moving out. So my wife's decided to sell her parents' house, the house that we own, and, uh, move on to other stuff. The last six or seven years, I've been trying to buy the house next door to me, uh, that was owned by Frankie Smith's sister, Henrietta, uh, Hetnick. And I, as you can see, I don't know if they chose in the plan, but the, I, I wanna take the property, the driveway on that property for Henrietta's place, it's on Frankie Smith's lands or my land now. Cause they were sisters, that house that Henrietta owned was supposed to have a drive-in basement, like the house next door where Bob and Debbie Flitz lived, they're supposed to have a drive-in basement, but. And, you know, brother and sister, I forget doing that, losing all your front yard, you can use my land to get the driveway. So, when we bought it, we had a, it was a life tendency for, for her to ease it, uh, to, she could use that driveway, it was in the deed when we bought it. Until her passing, or it was sold, and then they have no driveway anymore. So, we're gonna sell this house and, uh, either, I felt as if it was either best for me, or whoever's gonna end up owning this, the house next door. That that driveway doesn't go with the house we're selling at one eighty-four Main Street. I wanna take that, that forty feet off, like twenty-seven feet off, and connect it to the land that I own in the back with the eleven acres. And, uh, that way, uh, because basically, they're even gonna have to move two thousand yards to fill to put a drive-in driveway or basement, cause there's no, there's no room under left inside to do it with a big catch base and stuff. Plus, who knows, I mean, I, I'm just looking out for myself and the, and the buyer too.
Alright, so, alright, come up here, Dan, just show us on the plan what, okay, I see, cause you own quite a few parcels here, you actually own three of them here, right?
What are you trying to do? Get us confused? You're doing a good job.
Yeah, okay, alright. So, here's, here's main seat on the river. This is the house right now where Frankie Smith used to own.
I will try to figure it out, I think he's. That's I gotta find out.
When I, we bought the land, it was eight acres, we divided it up. We made this one acre, we made a one acre lot here.
But now instead of giving it this lot.
And the other remaining six acres, then we made this a lot.
Cause he has, John Turner Road, Turner Street.
Two, and the remaining six acres went with the land that we owned in the back. Now, here's the house that's next door. Right now, the driveway for this house comes on our land, right up through here. It comes over there, alright. So they have no driveway, originally, this was supposed to have a driveway underneath the, the house, like the house that goes off publicly. So what I wanna do is, we're selling this house, I don't wanna sell this piece of land with the driveway. I, I think, I wanted to combine it with the, this is eleven acres that I own, and probably back to either I buy it or the next tenant, maybe if they wanna buy that or not, the driveway was already done. Otherwise, there's really no room for, for me or anybody else to put a driveway in that house unless they drive, dig up all the dirt in front of the house. And put a drive-in basement, then who knows, the house probably didn't have a frost wall underneath the door and all this kinda stuff, so, I just wanna, we're selling this, this lot right here. No, no, just right here.
And you're taking this out of it?
No, no, we're, we're selling this lot right here, okay, I'm taking this out.
Okay.
I wanna combine this with my other land that I own out here.
Which he has frontage off of Turner Street.
Which I have frontage off of Turner Street.
This twenty-seven feet is gonna just go with your land?
Yes, it connects me on back, that's my land all out here.
Yeah.
But I, but like I said, right now, the driveway for this house comes up on our land, this is our lot now that Frankie owned.
It comes up here.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
It comes up right here and swings over there.
This right now is all the law.
It's not their land.
Here to here.
That's a page, just to here, to here, then it.
This is one lot, see? But he wants to sell, he owns this too. He wants to sell this house, but he doesn't want, he wants to dig this sliver and get to here now.
Right.
I really wanna sell this, it's not that I wanna make any money or anything. How they gonna get to here?
That this line gets erased.
Right over like a ten foot bag?
As if it's being right into his lot. He's adding this piece onto here.
Either that, they're gonna dig all this dirt out, like.
He's adding this piece on his main piece here. Just taking it off of that.
I solved the problem. I just wanna take this out right now. I wanna, I want my, you know, I already own it anyway.
You already own, you already own, you already own this property, right?
Yeah, I already own that, I own that, and I own this.
You own this.
He owns lot B.
You own this, and you, you, you now are selling this and you want this piece to go here.
Yes, cause I don't wanna sell the driveway with this house.
Alright, we're good.
I understand.
Now, this here, you're keeping too, right?
Oh, yeah, we're keeping that, yeah, that's, that's a separate deal.
The revised law is just this, he's taking this, this sliver of land.
We're still leaving plenty of frontage, twenty fifty tons.
Follow along, Nick Glenn?
There's still an acre.
That was totally what he's talking about, can't you?
But they took it off the market.
Now, does that create a separate?
No, it's not a lot, it's gonna be continued, it's kind of this.
It's part of my eleven acres that I own, the way back.
He's just taking a chunk, actually, the story doesn't even need to matter, all you're doing is taking this chunk off of this house.
But, as it stands now, that's part of this law, right?
Yes.
And he's just taking it off.
So, he's changing.
But he's not making it non-conforming.
He's not making it non-conforming, everything's still conforming, as long as it's all still conforming.
But this one being.
It still is.
It's part of this.
No, no, this little thing, I can't do it with that.
It's part of here.
This is part of this land I own here.
Yeah.
But I'm basically just keeping it.
So we would have to eliminate that?
Well, it is eliminated.
It's eliminated, it's, it's still there, but it's kind of.
So these people here just own, that's all, they just own a quarter, quarter of an acre?
Dennis, read the top right, read the top right note on the plan right in front of you.
Yeah, that's about it?
Okay.
Yeah, this is all that you own.
Says note, says right there, note, read the note.
Yeah, but you're not taking nothing away from nobody.
The note tells you what it's doing.
You already own it.
I, I just, I don't wanna sell this piece of land with the driveway, I don't wanna sell the driveway.
Looking at it here, squared off as a separate.
It's not a separate law.
Okay.
No, it says right on the plan, a note.
Had to eliminate that piece in the end.
It connects to the, it says the.
No, the note states that.
Yeah, it says the, basically, I don't wanna sell this lot, I don't wanna sell the driveway.
Right, I, I understand.
With those people, they don't want, basically, I mean, they don't.
Well, it also gives you your right of way to your back lot.
Give the back too, but.
The note states the whole thing, it says it's to be combined, it's make it one lot.
It helps me if someone else, whoever wants to buy there, because it's gonna make a real mess of our house.
He doesn't need it really, he already has, he already has.
You know, like with Bob, probably.
Yeah, I, I.
Alright, let's get on the checklist, we're good.
That's all I'm gonna do.
Charlie?
But then again, except.
Good Charlie, memories?
Uh, absolutely.
Yeah, make you back with another three hundred dollars.
Lot on public way?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, nearest permanent, yeah, permanent monument?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, zoning, yep. Uh, existing building?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, everyone's conforming?
Yep.
Uh, owners?
Listened?
Yep.
Owners, owners name?
Yep. Uh, okay. Do you wanna start signing?
No, no, A and I, A and I listens to law, A and I, yep.
Yep, that's there, perfect.
Name of all butters.
It's on you.
You're gonna sell that driveway, it's on your land.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna motion to accept it as submitted.
John makes the motion to accept it as submitted, Dennis seconds it. Um, any discussion? Seeing on all in favor? Unanimous, okay. Just like your Toyota deal, a sign and drive, Charlie, sign and drive.
It's my slow interest.
Yeah, no interest for like eighty-nine, ninety-nine months.
Yeah, any, any money? There's nothing.
Check with three hundred dollars, Dana?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we got three laws, okay, nine hundred.
That's the most important one.
I put the money.
I'm just gonna tell my wife what she owes me.
That was gonna be the first thing on, and, and never put it on the top, this was gonna be the first thing.
Hey, Dan, that's, thank you.
We actually have a, a, a pre-checklist, but it's all the questions we already answered.
Three hundred?
Yeah, down in Templeton. Yeah, just keep that. Charlie, I'm gonna step out and make a couple of phone calls, um, I just gotta stop back, you know? Can you just take care of the appointment things then, I'm gonna, we'll bring, we'll bring up the, these couple things here. Oh, that's to do signing, okay. Alright, I'll stay, we'll do it fast then, okay? Three thousand, yep, put that right away. Double vision of his guesses every time. Probably took him more money than the treasurer's office today.
It didn't clear yet.
Yeah, they haven't cleared yet. They're always looking at it anyways.
Well, they used to that anyway.
Oh, I don't know. Should we hire anybody though?
Assistant, assistant treasurer. And, no, and a treasurer too, yeah, assistant, yep, assistant accountant and assistant and a new treasurer.
Who's the person, do you know? Where they from or?
These three just get her, get bonded.
Is that here?
Pay him to go to school.
I don't know, it just, I guess she doesn't, you must have a license to do that, don't you?
Yeah. Okay, so we just have, these just need to be signed, okay, when I seen it, I thought, okay, oh, for sig, I'm sorry, forms for signature, okay, good.
Do I take something back?
Just the A and R, I mean, the, the, my lot.
Yeah.
See the signatures on this and then just report it with the description?
Yeah. See, it's a lot simpler than it sounds, huh? Oh, some lots, it's just crazy.
Now they said, losing the perfect time of year, I think you gotta talk about the market. Then they send you there, whatever body, whatever they foreclosed on, which was Henrietta's estate, they have a year to come back.
Oh yeah, yeah, if you have any type of medic, any, you know, any kind of nursing home or anything like that, yeah.
She was like, she was had, had that, uh, mass health.
Yeah.
When they broke rules, her family has a year to come, a year to come back and pay the back tax and then he, and I says, how about improvement? He's like, well, we don't know about that.
Yeah, you. They just give you a thank you card.
Like they said, everybody's gone, and he was a man that's still.
Okay, this Dana's my lot.
That's my lot, I had both, we all.
Nice trying to show your rage. Alright Dana, have a good night buddy.
Everybody thanks.
Yeah.
Keep the lights on, the lights, we're giving you a light on this.
Forms? See you later Dana.
Always a pleasure.
Alright.
They were on the right side.
They still are.
Okay, no.
We're good, yep.
It's all just the under the, uh.
Yep, because this is the other one, so, we're good.
No, 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 the forms for the, um.
Oh, for the, uh, I got you.
For the appointments.
I got you.
The appointments, they're under someone's package.
What are we looking for?
We have forms for those three positions that we filled last week, the members for MRPC. Two MRPC and one town building assessment committee, I don't know who we, I think we voted Kristoff on that one, cause he wasn't there, right?
Yep.
Dennis, um.
Yep.
You need to, um, something about the, um, the board, you want the board to vote on your open space, um.
Oh yeah, we need a vote on the open space plan, just that the committee accepts it and, uh.
Okay.
Uh, we have no more additional recommendations.
Okay, um, you wanna make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion, that we vote to accept the open space plan and.
As submitted?
Without any additions or su- deletions.
John, you wanna second that out?
Sure, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous.
Can we just send a letter forwarding that to, uh, I, can't find it, John?
Don't worry about it, we're gonna worry about it next weekend, can't find the form, so don't worry about it.
It, it kinda needs to go up.
Does somebody have, does somebody have the forms for the appointments, forms in your packet, by any chance? What's all this paperwork, is that any of us?
Oh, yeah, here it is.
John's got it, okay.
I don't have a Kristoff.
Oh, Kristoff was Kristoff's one. Oh, John didn't even come tonight again.
Let me, uh, this wasn't in my packet.
Okay, we've already voted to do these, right?
Yeps.
So why, um.
You just, you never signed them, you never did anything.
Who's supposed to sign them?
Everybody voted, um, I'm gonna say sign them. Um, who did, who did you officially appointed?
You just need to fill them out, we've already voted them, we don't need to.
No, but you didn't sign it.
We need to sign it.
Mm-hmm, she, she told me you guys needed to sign it.
Okay, individual, in other words, whoever's spots in here, whoever it is, in other words, planning board, who's, who, cause we got, um, transportation committee, then we have planning commission.
Yes.
I think I was on the, you asked me to do the planning commission last time?
You were on planning commission, correct Dennis?
Yeah, I think that's what you asked me to do, yeah.
And then the transportation was Charlie?
I believe so.
Okay, and then the third one was, uh, Kristoff was not present. So, you just need to sign where it says, sign by?
Yep.
In title, just leave it blank, I don't know what the, reusable planning board member, I don't even know what you. Just, I would just leave, just sign it and then Carol can send them through.
Exactly.
What's the zoning districts item?
Alright, um. First thing, the open space boundary markers, I've had a couple of, actually over the last few months, um. Couple of concerned citizens, so to speak, wanting to know where they are, um, are they on my side, am I mowing somebody's land, is somebody mowing my lawn and that kinda thing? And so I was gonna wonder if the board wants to maybe send, or maybe through Dennis, go to open space or, um, community preservation commission or something like that? And see if we can identify Dennis some funds to, um, survey off, you listening Dennis, to survey off and maybe put some, some markers, even some entrance gates? You know, like even like a couple of pieces, nice picket or something like that, at least, you know, on, on different, on, on our open space places, one of them's over on, um, um, what's the subdivision down there off, on the River Road?
Yep.
On the left down there.
That's one of them.
One in the cul-de-sac, it goes wide open down there, somebody asked me, where is the spaces, I don't know, I went down there, I had a plan, and I'm like, wow, it's like right there across that nice manicured lawn. But we got there, we got the one up on Victoria Drive, I just wanna bring that up to the board, if you wanna maybe have Dennis be our liaison to the, um. To, through, um, the community preservation commission, or open space?
Yep.
And see if they'll work with us as far as maybe securing some funds for signs and, and marketage and.
We don't have any budget, but we, we probably will have to go through CPC to do.
That's, that's what I was kinda hoping for, but if you, we, I think the board can, will definitely back you as far as, it's stuff that we've gone on our way to try to get open space. But we need to identify where it's at, at least from the entrance, you could park here, you could walk there, but right now, nobody knows how to get into it.
Well, isn't that one of the issues that we've, up on Victoria Lane that we've been dealing with, would they never put markers into place?
They put some kind of a wooden stick at the end of the.
Right, going to say, but it's not sufficient, because we need to actually identify, even like I said, a couple of pieces of, uh, nice decorative fence with the plaque saying it's right here, show a little map of what it is and where it goes.
Right.
Even, even a.
Same on the other one, we need to identify the parcels by.
Is that something in the future we possibly, you know, wanna do in the. Put a little sign, like, you know, somehow mark it, cause it's true, there's no marker or anything there.
Where?
I'm just saying in the future, on, we should include it in our, in our subdivision somewhere, right, we have open space, it's part of it, they're responsible.
Right, but I'm just, moving forward, we can do that John, but we need a jack sack, so maybe through the CPC and, 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 and open space and the planning board in conjunction, we can maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
Identify these parcels and, and put some fences or, I shouldn't say fences, but some decorative, you know, entrances, so to speak?
Yep.
To identify them, okay?
And, uh, well, we're rather, maybe we should make sure we include that with French quarters, cause there's one up there too.
Exact, well, I'm saying all of them, all of them, so, okay, alright, and then the other one, uh, John, the zoning districts was that I had, um, um, just really personal observation and whatnot. About possibly, um, maybe, we should maybe consider doing some, some additional highway business in town to coincide with what we already have, like a lot of illegal activities. I'm not gonna pick anyone out, but I'm gonna say, I think that we, I'm in conflicts, I own some land, um, but I think we should consider, um, a highway business use from say like, um. Hook's Autobody, which is Churchill Road, um, all the way up to the brow.
Yeah, I think we talked about that before, I think we, kind of as a group, we sort of all agreed a little bit, no, Frank, you had a couple of concerns, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, but I think we. What, positive or against Frank?
Did you write? Against it, weren't you, didn't you have some concerns? I think Dennis was. Maybe I missed it or not?
I am, I, you know, I'm not really.
I honestly would, I would.
I would, I would go further.
I would say, I would actually push for all of, you know, all of two A and all of one O one to be highway.
Business, yeah.
Yeah, I would go right down all the way to the brow from Templeton.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to do it in pieces because.
All the way to Phillips, Phillips a lot.
Well, no, we, once you get around the corner, you get the commercial industrials down around the corner, right? But, um.
Cause we already have so many businesses.
And the rest of state land, once you get up to the brow, it's state land on the right hand side.
I mean, I also own property there too.
But anyways, it's not that we can decide, we'll have to hold a public hearing, but I just wanna see if the board was, um, wants to bring that up and, and have some public input meetings.
Yep.
Um, and just, just to see if it's something we, um, we need to tell you what, we can't keep complaining that the town has no money, but yet we, we wanna close, close the door to business and businesses. It's not always the big box stores, it's, it's small, it's small enterprises, that, that create jobs and whatnot, you know, whether it be a convenience store or, or, or this or that, but right now, you.
Somebody wanted to open small.
We have, in that one stretch I'm talking about, we have a bunch of people operating just with no signs out there, we know they're there. I'm not playing board police, I'm not knocking anybody's doors, but we have.
Well, we don't do the enforcement, so.
Well, we don't, we have perfectly good commercial sites that people are working out of, we're not seeing the revenues from the town because we're not, they're not taxing these businesses, why? Because they're not businesses, wink, wink. So I think we need to just be a little proactive here and look at what it is, we have good commercial property, um, I think it should be treated like it.
Right.
And if you permit it, you can actually get the taxation out of it too.
What about finding some way of getting some of our brownfields back?
What are you worried about brownfields for? People can, right now, people can, I'm looking at developing good, clean sites, brownfields, perfect example, let me just finish. Brownfields are a perfect example, let's take taxpayers' money to fix something that somebody walked away from, where I'm trying to zone stuff with people that are willing to invest in the town. And spending it and making their own money and creating jobs. This brownfield stuff, as far as I'm concerned, go after the people that polluted them, or go to the government, stop picking on the little people in town, let's, let's, I, I think brownfields are a joke. I think they're a joke, because I don't think the municipality should be the ones that are responsible for it, as far as cleaning them up, and I just, for the life of me, I'm not gonna defend cleaning up a brownfield site. When we can offer fresh, clean commerce in town, because you tell me, who can go to a bank and borrow a dollar, never mind a million dollars, on a brownfield site? Let me answer the question for you, it's zero, but I know a lot of banks would be willing to lend people money on a fresh, whether it be a highway business or a commercial zone, on a fresh idea, a virgin site. That wanna move forward, that's my opinion, I'm just not arguing, I'm just saying, go ahead, your turn.
How about towns like Gardner, Winchton, and they've activated a number of their.
Exactly, it's taken them fifteen years too, I'm looking, we could rezone.
Been more than that even, and we haven't really moved on.
I'm talking fifteen years since it took them just to get the money to get moving on, I'm talking about, I wanna see some zoning. Where we can encourage the businesses that are hiding behind doors to stop paying their fairing the taxes, number one.
I agree, I would like to see brownfields done, but I think they're two separate issues, this is, brownfield's gonna be a, um, a big company, a big major, you know, undertaking, I'm all for that, but this is gonna be. You know, somebody wants to open a hair salon, somebody wants to open a smaller repair shop, this is, small businesses that, you know, let's generate something, you know?
Are you, are you looking to do a two standard tax base?
Right now, we have zero tax base Dennis, what, what you said, you wanna hurry up and tax the businesses that wanna come in?
Well, no, that's what.
As far as I'm concerned, the businesses should be taxed half as much as the residents.
It sounds like.
Because they'll generate jobs and more money, so it all comes out in the watch. Stop thinking.
I, I don't want a two tax system.
No.
Uh, but, uh.
I'm all for taxing businesses less, so they can offer jobs and investments in the communities.
I think, why should a guy get a business license, cause he can't operate it all? Right now, my boss.
But.
What's that Frank?
I said, why should a guy get a business license, but right now, no enforcement?
Just don't put a sign up, just don't put a sign up and say, no, it's just all my friends coming, that's what, that's what they're doing right now.
Why should even get one?
But I think if we, if we use that as the zoning there along those corridors of the highway, you know.
Who's gonna enforce it?
That's a whole other, but at least if it's there.
No, that's a very serious issue.
But that's not our issue.
We got a building inspector that works four hours a week, and he's gonna enforce our laws?
But.
I agree with you, yeah.
He's an enforcer, the building inspector.
Right, we're talking two different things right now, I'm talking about making it, make it attractive, so businesses can actively invest in it.
I realize we're talking about a different thing, but we've had, I mean, towns like, like Gardner and Winchton have applied for funds and haven't been able to get them over. It took them several years to do it, but they cleaned up, uh, what was that factory over?
You're talking two, the guy, who said, that's two different things, right?
Yep, but they were able to do that with those brownfield areas, we have, we're not even moving on any of this stuff.
But you have to have some. That's not what we're discussing.
Who's we? Hmm? Who's we?
The town itself is not moving on any of that stuff.
Right, but we're talking two different things, right now, I'm looking at.
I know, I know we are, we, you're right.
We need to zone, so they build, so they will come, we need to zone it, so they'll at least stick their heads up, put a sign up, that we can tax them right now.
I, I agree this.
We have all these satellite ghost ships in town, and some of them are along that stretch, and I'm not gonna name no names, I'm just saying.
But that, there again, like.
And I know they would love to come forward and say, yeah, we're here, but they can't, because they can't even get a business license because of it.
Like Frank says, there's no enforcement for any of that now.
Right.
Enforcement now would prevent that from happening, and it's law, and it won't make any difference later.
You're missing a big point, the point is this, if we go down and shut them down and you have nobody, if you, if, if, the town goes out of control, fine.
We'll have vacant buildings.
Now we just have vacant buildings, these people are trying to survive, we need to catch up with them, we need to zone the commercial businesses that are in this town. And that whole stretch down there is what is happening, so what I'm saying is this, we need to schedule a public hearing, as far as I'm concerned, we should cut every tree out in town too. And send it to the, send it to the mills, so we can generate some funds in this town. We've saved so much land in this town, the only thing that's going down the stream is other residents, we need to save this town, we need to save this town from a commercial standpoint. We need tax revenues in this town, you can't fix every brownfield and plant grass and expect the town to benefit from it. Right now, there's people who wanna invest in this town, and they can't, because we don't have enough zoning in place for us to save this town. So, I'm so, I've added up to here when people talk about, we can't afford the school, we can't afford this, we can't afford that, but as soon as you bring up, let's do this, so we can bring some business in town, oh my god. Oh my god, it's going to hell, you know it's going to hell? The whole town, we need to generate some funds, and I'm not just looking out for me, I'm looking out for the next generation, we need to start planning for the next generation.
Although I don't know if I'd make it highway business or just mixed use, I don't know.
Well, I think that's, I think we can.
Highway business is pretty much the same thing, cause a mixed.
There are some residents.
It's gonna affect people who have residences.
Property there, that might want to, like, uh.
If you have, if you have.
Big chunk of us own property on that road.
If you have, highway business is mixed, is mixed use with residents, you can still do residents.
You can still build a house.
You can still build a house in highway business.
That's what would matter to me.
Our commercial industrial zones are the ones that you can't build a new residence in, you can be a pre-existing non-conforming.
I'm good from Templeton, Santos and the Brow.
Yeah, so, so why don't we do this, we need to pick a, a day, month, week, whatever, and schedule a public hearing for public input.
Well, again, this is gonna give the, the residents an opportunity to step in and speak, and if, if everyone says, hey, we don't want this, then the, the residents get to speak.
It's gonna go to town meeting floor anyways, it's gonna go to town.
At least they get a chance to talk on it.
So, anybody care to, uh?
We're gonna do a treaty.
And that's probably what we're gonna get.
So.
Kirk, how do we address that on the board, where like you and I and Frank all own substantial pieces of property on?
Um, there's, there's, there's disclosures in the AG's office as far as, because with small town politics, we're all volunteers, you're always bound to be.
Even my family owns a piece of property in two A.
Oh, yeah, yeah, true, you have families, right.
So, we would just do a disclosure, we'll worry about the legal stuff, let's just bring it to the vote, let's bring it to the, to a hearing, so the people can speak and see if they're interested in. Um, so, anybody care to, um, gather, I mean, I'm just looking at something we could do for like springtime meeting, you know what I mean?
Right, so we're looking.
We have time to work on it.
So why don't we look at fall doing something?
So, do you wanna do a, just an informational, um, meeting, um, we'll put it on the agenda, but it's, what to discuss zone changes, or we'll just skip the.
Like September, October?
All going, we have to have a public hearing, but we need to identify the parcels before we do a public hearing, so.
We don't want.
Probably should make it September, because.
I would, yeah, I would say, I would.
Let's just put it, let's put it at our first meeting in September, that's the September twelfth, how's that?
I just get a feeling, what do they want?